In compliance with Chapter 231 Public Law 197 entitled Open Public Meetings Act, out of the notice that this board meeting has been provided specified in the act. Proper notice of this public meeting was provided in a notice of January 7, 2019. Said notice is posted at the address of the Board of Education offices, mail to the Nutley Township Clerk, advertised under Nutley, signed Starletter on January 7, 2019, posted on our district website. This is an official meeting. I'll give you a scan for the website, please.
This is Dan Chatton, Mr. DeMayo.
Here.
Mr. Ferraro.
Here.
Mr. Kuzicki.
Here.
Mrs. Quirk.
Here.
Mr. Roddy.
Here.
Mr. Scolera.
Here.
Ms. Arrow.
Here.
Mr. Farmesola.
Here. Can we have an approval in a minute, please?
I'm making motion to approve in a minute.
Seven.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any correspondence this evening?
No.
Okay, we're going to turn it over to Dr. Julie Glazer for the introduction and the presentations for this evening's meeting.
Thank you. It's always one of my favorite meetings because we have the opportunity to talk about the performance reports. That is the results of the testing from last spring. We have our Directors of Curriculum, Mr. Kent Vigiat and Mrs. Chirico Consolo, who are going to talk about how our students did, doing some comparative analysis, talking about the reports that are available, and giving you an update on how things have changed since the last performance report last October. I'm pretty excited about it, actually. In addition, we have Communications Director Karen Greco, who's going to go through the criteria for district ranking. There seems to be a lot of conversation about that, and we want to make sure everybody understands the criteria and understands how those rankings are determined. So, I'm going to ask that Kent and me come up and get started with the student performance data. Thanks.
Mr. Paffey, would you like to light all the presents?
Let me ask someone for you.
Uh, well, yeah.
Thank you.
Is that good for everybody in the room? Okay, we've got a lot of colors in this presentation, so we'll get the lights are off. We want to thank the board for allowing us to present tonight. We want to thank the students, the teachers in the room, I see, and across the schools here, for all the hard work they do all year long, the students and the teachers, the administrators. Mr. Matera, thanks for representing them. Appreciate you coming out. We're going to look at data tonight from the last testing cycle, and this is one of three ways New Jersey DOE has reporting mechanism. This is one way they mandate we present to the board. Once every October, we're a little ahead of schedule. We got the data a little ahead of schedule. The second is through the Q-SAC process, which will be entering next year. And the third is through the performance reports, which will come out in the wintertime. We'll present on those as well. The data you'll see here is the same data that will be represented in the performance reports when it comes out. So, we'll walk you through a little bit of the data. Before we get started, we just wanted to highlight our new website and show you where this data can be found. You can pull it up on an iPad right now, computer, even your mobile phone. If you go to our district's webpage, I think there's a little corner here somewhere. Under District, the District tab at the top, you come to the Office of Curriculum Instruction, click on that, and then down here, the board presentations have been listed, and you can see we're right here, September 23rd. So, if you'd like to, you could view this data as it goes on. And this data is meant to be shared with everybody, especially the educators, especially the parents, and we're going to be working through to analyze this data, break it down. We've already started that process at the administrative retreat. We've talked about it with the second-year teachers already when they came for their day in the summer. And we'll be continuing to break it down. And as the year goes on, we'll get more specific data. So, we'll get evidence statement data, we'll get more data as it comes in, how the state releases things. You'll see other things on our website as well you may want to check out while we're here. We have our graduation requirements, the cut scores for different tests. You'll see our standards, Achieve New Jersey, more for the educators. You'll see the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment criteria are there as well, as well as performance reports, something that we talk about usually in the wintertime. And then our board presentation is on data here. And we'll be expanding our website as the year goes on. Tonight's presentation and the beginning of understanding this data is an important part of the improvement cycle. We continuously look at data coming in. We look at data from the New Jersey Student Learning Assessments. Just for everybody in the room, we used to use the PARK. The PARK continuum went away, and New Jersey adopted a very similar test, Jeanne will talk about this a little more, that took its place. It's very similar. It measures the New Jersey Student Learning Standards, and it is internet-based, it's online, and students get data very quickly back. So, we got our data probably about three, four weeks ago. I would say just around late August, when the teacher orientation was coming in. And we take that with the rest of the data that we see here, EP data, which we have in already. So, this presentation will also include that. NSGP, Student Growth Percentiles, a lot of internal benchmarks, which we're rolling over to our new School G system. SAT and ACT data. We take all this data and we bring it in, and we understand what these metrics mean. We understand this, we analyze this, and it is formative in that it forms our instruction, forms our map, forms our curriculum as we move forward. Areas of need get highlighted, and we work towards those. So, tonight we'll see two sets of this data. The SAT and ACT data is not in yet. We usually get that mid-September. It's not in, as of last Thursday, Friday, when I was checking, but it'll come in today. And the internal benchmarks are continuously being put in our system. Jeanne?
So, as you may know, New Jersey is no longer part of the PARK Consortium. However, the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment remains relatively unchanged. So, because of that, we use the same online platform to administer the assessments. And as a result, we can still have the ability to compare data from PARK to the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment, engage district-wide trends and areas for strength or areas for growth. I wanted to take a minute to just show you a little bit of the time requirements for the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment. These tables provide an outline allotted for each assessment by content area. So, if you look here, you can see, here we go, the ELA time requirements, the math and science. And if you look at the changes, actually, even just from 2018 to the 2019 administration, you can see that the DOE has been really responsive to both parent and teacher concerns about the length of time that we take away from instruction to assess students. So, they've made some adjustments. So, you'll see here in 2018, there were three units, and now it's down to two units, and also about 90 minutes less of instructional time being lost for the testing. And they were very clear to say that with these changes, they're still gathering enough data to assess the standards, so you can still compare the data, but they're just getting more efficient at the way that they're organizing the assessments so that it takes less time.
I wanted to talk just a little bit about the scores, the cut scores as they come in. The New Jersey Student Learning Assessment, similar to the PARK, runs from 650 to 850, right? With different cut scores and different levels along the way. Typically, level five means exceeding expectations, grade level expectations, right? Five is the highest you can score. And it runs, I believe it's from 785 to 850 in that range. Followed by green, meeting grade level expectations. We typically code that as green, right? Followed by yellow, approaching expectations. These are students that are very close, meeting grade level expectations. It's an interesting population to look at, students that are almost there. The tan is partially meeting expectations, and red is, did not meet expectations. But I wanted to show this information in a way we start to look at it in 100% stack column. So, this is a way to graph data to represent our whole student population, 100% of a grade level, 100% of a grade level at a school, 100% of the grade level in the state, if you will, and how, what percentage they make up out of that whole. So, it gives you 100% on the side here, and you can see that about 11% of this graph is blue, right? Whereas about 8% down here is red. And then you can go ahead and find out different percentages. So, we start looking at this data, it's important to understand how we're looking at it. And we're going to look at it in 100% stacked columns. When you look at it in 100% stacked columns, right? You may see clusters of these columns next to each other. And this is important for understanding trends and movement over time. So, just to take a step back and explain what we're looking at. We're looking at, and you'll see this throughout our presentation, data that started in 1415, 1516, 1617, 1718, 1819. We actually have five years of usable data based on the PARK and New Jersey Student Learning Assessment. And this cluster will show you how we're trending over time, right? And some things you might want to look at when looking at this data, there's a lot to look at, a lot of different angles to look at this data in this form. One thing you may want to look at is just the overall and trend of maybe where those fives are, the highest level kids, are we meeting those kids, where are they? So, this is a little less than 10%, we've got about maybe 8, 9% right there. Now, it's trending down, right? In this model, this example. Another great place to look is where green meets yellow. Green meets yellow would be considered meeting, meeting exceeding expectations. This is what they term as passing this test, right? So, you'll see in the graduation requirements, a passing score for several assessments. It's getting a four or five is a passing score. Right, so how is this trending? Another thing we frequently look at is the bottom. How are our low kids trending? We should see this decreasing, right? And then this yellow area is interesting, because these are the kids that are so close. If we find out what's going on here, can we help these students move to green, right? They're very close. So, these are the things we look at as we go through the presentation. You'll see district-level reports from grade levels and schools and district data compared to New Jersey data. We used to have also PARK data in there, again, the PARK is no longer. So, we just had New Jersey data, our district, and then the school that that data shows up in. And you'll see these clusters, and it looks like a lot of colors coming up, right? It is. But what it's showing is how things are trending over time with regard to this. At the end of these, we'll also take another look at the data in cohort data, meaning we'll follow a grade-level class through their fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, and see how they perform on their respective test, because that's differentiated as it goes on as well pertaining to the class. So, we should see growth there as well. So, we're going to start off with a grade-level approach by looking at the data. And Jeanne's going to start in grade four.
So, we're going to start with ELA, and here are the next slides that follow. We're going to show the student performance on four years of the PARK down here, and then this last year of the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment. And just to kind of piggyback off what Kent was just saying, we have the level five in blue, which is the exceeding expectations, the level four in green, which is meeting, the yellow, which is approaching, the orange or the tan, partially, and then the red, not meeting expectation. Okay, so, for grade three ELA, we had a total of 294 students take the assessment, and the average score on that assessment was a 758, which is in the meeting expectations range. So, this data is interesting because it also reflects assessment scores from the first full year of our revised ELA curriculum. We didn't make significant changes to the actual curriculum document, but we did bring in units of study resources, and we reached out to teachers to enhance their classroom libraries. So, we also keep that in mind as a lens to see the data through as well. So, just looking here, you'll see throughout the graphs, what we've done is in a purple box, we've boxed out Nutley so you can see it. Next to it is the state. If PARK Consortium was still in existence, that would have been all the way to the left, and then we have our elementary schools listed here. So, some things, highlights that are worth looking into are that close to 10% of district third graders were exceeding expectations at ELA overall. 75% of Washington students scored meeting or exceeding expectation in written expression. And this related well to the Washington Building Goal as well. A lot of times we talk about goal setting and how that relates to the data. And Washington had a building goal around articulation within writing, so the data reflects some growth in that written expression standard. Next, moving on to grade four ELA. Again, you'll see the purple box around the Nutley data. 296 fourth-grade students took this assessment overall, and the average score was 766, which again falls into the meeting expectations score range. Our data here really mirrors the state trends both New Jersey and Nutley see. You can see here an increase in exceeding expectations here. 69% of students met or exceeded expectations compared to only 57 here statewide. And some progress to be shared is that 81% of Yanacaw fourth-grade students scored meeting or exceeding expectations in the written expression section. So, something worth celebrating. In grade five ELA, we had 306 students take the assessment, and the average score was a 766, which falls in the meeting expectations range again. One thing to celebrate here is that although we saw, oh, I don't want to go too far ahead, sorry, although we saw here a slight dip, 18% of our fifth graders district-wide scored exceeding expectations range on this assessment. 69% of students scored a four or five on the reading informational text section specifically. This increase may be attributed to the ELA revisions that we did, where we added some more informational text units of study as well.
So, Jeanne, I'm sorry, the dip just means more exceeded expectations?
I'm sorry, I'll just bring it back.
The dip, yeah. The dip means that more students are exceeding expectations, not the...
Yeah, and this dip here.
Yep.
Yep. This would be a little bit less meeting or exceeding combined, but more overall exceeding.
More exceeding.
Yes. Yeah, so we saw growth, just to be clear, in the level five students, and we saw a slight dip in the combined level four and five meeting or exceeding.
Thank you.
Yeah, without, before we move on to the next slide, just other things to look at and compare. All the state data here compared to Nutley data, you know, about 10 percentage points higher, which is what we would want. And then we want to see this growing, and this is the dip that we're referring to. Moving on to grade six, we were trending, again, you see a consistent amount of, we had 350 students, by the way, take this both math and ELA. It's a very large sixth-grade group from last year, now they're in seventh grade. We have the same, about 80% meeting or exceeding expectations, but we had a significant growth in number of fives here. And sixth grade was interesting dataset-wise, because we expanded our pilot of departmentalizing math in ELA, and we expanded that in several schools. First thing I'd like to point out would be Radcliffe School. From this year to this year, they went into a departmentalized math in ELA approach. And we saw significant growth, not only in fives, you could look where that started to there, and then fours, there to there, right? But now, Radcliffe School is experiencing 95% meeting or exceeding expectations the second year into their departmentalized approach in ELA in math. And we see other schools following suit. We see Washington School that went departmentalized last year, more than doubling their amount of fives, and significant growth in meeting expectations. We also see that in Yanacaw School, again, maybe tripling their amount of fives, passing 32%, I would say, and then this down here. We also see the other school, it would be Lincoln School. Lincoln School, we learned some lessons from, they had three sections as opposed to an even number, and there were some things we learned from last year that were provided feedback and adjusting part of our continuous cycle, right? Spring Garden was the one school that was not departmentalized that will be this year.
Mr. Vang, can you just explain the difference, you know, how that pilot is working? What will you actually transition to?
Yeah, so we transitioned a couple of things. The intent, and we presented to the board last year in the O'Hartford, the intent was to provide a transitional year for sixth-grade students as they are middle-level learners before they get to the middle school. And we looked at the schedule, we looked at teachers, we looked at a bunch of things, and we're trying to find content specialists in math in ELA to teach math in ELA to every homeroom section, to their section and their homeroom section. And they would pick up a second subject, so ELA teachers also taught social studies, math, teachers also taught science. And we could also provide for them other things as part of this. We provided, this year, for example, we're providing advisory. We're going into advisory. Last year, we provided this theme class once a week to help them with transition. We thought that by moving around, we thought that by letting teachers specialize in two subjects instead of four subjects, it would improve instruction. And we're getting data back now that supports that move in district. There are a lot of obstacles we have still in sixth grade. Our facilities aren't that like the middle school. The electives we can offer them aren't the same. So, we're doing the best we can with what we have in the elementary setting.
Thank you.
So, that's almost like putting them into a smaller middle-school setting?
I wouldn't say it's a middle-school setting at all, Mr. Kuzicki. I would say we are departmentalizing. And I think in the beginning, we were talking as if it was a middle-school model-type thing. I think what we learned through the process is we are far from offering everything that the middle school could offer these students, but we can offer the students great opportunities by departmentalizing our staff and going in that direction. And the data is showing that as well. But there are some things that we would like to offer, such as electives, such as the teaming approach, such as, one thing we really wanted to do with the sixth grade is allow the teachers more time to talk about their students. We never got there just through scheduling and dynamics of an elementary school setting. So, those are things we're working on. Moving on to seventh grade, seventh grade ELA. We saw, again, comparing the Jersey data to John Walker Middle School data, we see a little decrease here in fives, but overall, meeting and exceeding expectations, we're still seeing a linear growth pattern there. Grade eight, we saw a jump in almost doubling of fives, and we saw a growth pattern here in meeting and exceeding expectations. This can be attributed to students aging in our workshop model system. And the middle school has taken on many approaches that are consistent with elementary's strategies in going through the workshop model. You're going to see as students are in this system longer, they are going to do better with some of the techniques and routines that are involved in the strategy. In grade nine, we see the trend continuing of growth here. And if you notice where we are here and where the state average is here, we're at least 10 percentage points higher on that. Grade 10, we saw, and this was a real win for our high school team. They've been working tirelessly in 10th grade ELA to meet, to go to PD, to work with Mrs. Benavides, and we're starting to see a data shift, a doubling of fives, and 10 percentage points more of meeting expectations. Want to give a technical name for this?
So, this next section is going to provide similar data for the math New Jersey Student Learning Assessment. So, looking here at grade three, again, when we go to the elementary slides, you'll always see the purple box around the district here. And we did see a slight dip here in meeting or exceeding expectations. But something to celebrate here is also that we saw a dip in students not meeting at grade-level expectations. So, that's something to celebrate. We always want to see the blue and the green increasing and the red decreasing. So, that right there is good news for us. The 1819 school year was also the first year that we piloted the revised Math in Focus, Scope and Sequence. So, although we didn't bring any new instructional resources in, we moved around some units and some of the pacing to ensure that we were giving all of the concepts the appropriate amount of time to meet the standards. So, this is also reflected with some of the work that we've done there. Grade four math, 298 students took the assessment. The average score was 753, which falls into the meeting expectations range. Here you can see an increase in meeting and exceeding expectations. Grade five math, 306 students took the assessment. The average score was 757, which falls into the meeting expectations range. And this is interesting, because although we saw a slight dip here in meeting and exceeding expectations, so did the state. So, that draws questions about the assessment itself, too. Maybe it was a little bit more challenging for students. Our trend is consistent with them there, so that's important to note as well.
Moving back to grade six, math trends follow ELA trends in this capacity, where we see a growth, not as significant as in ELA in fives, and we're consistent here. We do want to highlight, you know, the Radcliffe School when they went to the departmentalized approach. You see the shift in data here, and then we want to look at the same trend happening in Washington School. That's pretty significant to a departmentalized math approach. And not so much in Yanacaw, but it is a large amount of growth there. So, some of this data, we use to evaluate those moves, and it's supportive, and we're continuing to tweak and learn lessons and move forward, giving our students the best possible opportunities. And seventh grade math is interesting, because this is everyone minus the kids that track in Algebra I, right? So, those kids will be out of the dataset here. Those kids are strong math students. So, we see it being very consistent with what we had last year here, and still significantly higher than the state, if you bring them over there. Eighth grade math, this dataset is interesting. It's the kids minus, the kids now that are in geometry that took Algebra I set in seventh grade, and the kids that are taking Algebra I in eighth grade. That's a significant, I believe we have three or four sections of students that do that. So, minus those kids, we're starting to see fives come out, and we're seeing a nice trend here in the right direction. They're still significantly higher and more accelerated than the state. If we look at Algebra I, this chart needs some explanation. There's about 320 kids in this population, and students can take Algebra I in middle school in seventh grade, a small population. In eighth grade, a little larger, about three to four sections. They can take it as freshmen, or they can take it as sophomores typically in high school. So, there's a wide range when students get tracked into math here. You can see the New Jersey, you can see Nutley, and you can see students that take Algebra I in John Walker Middle School, right? We stop here at yellow, there are no tans or reds for a student that takes it at John Walker Middle School. That's been pretty consistent over the years, right? And this is a big win for us right here, is decreasing the amount of students that have not met expectations. Algebra I, there's also another dataset that's missing here. Last year, we started mediating students, so we started taking students that did not meet expectations, putting them through remediation program and having them take the test again. That dataset, and we passed with 33% of those students. Those students are not in this graph, how the state reports things, just to be clear. Geometry, again, about 305 students take geometry. And again, we have students taking geometry in the middle school, using that one section. And then most students will take it in high school, most take it as sophomores, some will take it as freshmen. And you see the district trend, right, aligned with the state. You see the middle school trend. Last year, we had a significant amount of students score fives in this group coming in. And we're looking at that for good reasons, to see what's going on, you know, there, as well as greens. We also saw a significant jump here, and this can also be attributed to a district-wide mathematics program working its way up through the system. Algebra II, we had about 70 students take this. The state changed their test requirements. And full disclosure, juniors that took Algebra II did not have to take this test. So, this represents mostly sophomores that took this test, and maybe some freshmen. And we saw a significant jump in students that have met or exceeded expectations. I will, I mean, the cohort data, if you mind.
So, these next slides show data in cohorts. So, a cohort data analysis is when you look at the same group of students over time. So, for example, here we're looking at the current fifth graders who took the fourth-grade New Jersey Student Learning Assessment, and then we're also comparing it to in 1718 when they were third graders taking the PARK. So, again, here you can see for ELA on one side, and math on this side, the state average, it's kind of hard to see it a little bit there, with the trends of an increase in exceeding expectations and meeting expectations. And then similarly here, our trend of the increase here and here.
It's almost there.
Yeah. Similar on math. Again, you saw a slight dip in the cohort and a slight dip here in the cohort. So, we're right in line with the state when we look at the group of students progressing through and taking the PARK in third grade and now the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment as fourth graders.
I would like to point out, though, although our data is mirroring what's going on in the state, we are significantly, I would say, it's hard to see, but probably about 10%, 8 to 10 percentage points deeper in the grade than the state. So, that's another thing to look at when comparing the state. This would do the same thing, our current seventh graders. Our current seventh graders, that just came across the street to the middle school, this large group of 350 students that's coming through. It tracks their progress on their respective test as they go from third, fourth, fifth and sixth grade. And what we're seeing is, you know, a pretty linear growth right here in Nutley's ELA growth, and that's what we would expect to see.
And look at the red there, too.
And then the red going down sharply. This is very supportive data of the work that's going on in the ELA department over time. The same students tracked over time with their respective tests, a little different angle on the data. And this would be our 10th grade. It's only ELA because the math gets fuzzy with students being tracked differently to different tests, right? So we just look at the ELA data and how that's trending. So in transparency, we'd like to pick three cohort groups at different levels and track them to give us a full picture of how the data's going.
So thinking about some next steps, just using the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment data before we go into other data. Data from this assessment was shared with district-wide administrators at our administrative retreat day this summer. Principals and coordinators had time to talk, look at the data, kind of discuss trends that they saw. There's already conversations going on with our coordinators about curriculum shifts or instructional resources that may address some of the different areas for growth. As the reporting continues to come towards us, we'll get evidence statement analysis and that gives us the specific standards and how students did on each of them, so that can also help drive some of the next steps. The data is also analyzed by teachers to drive instruction. So we have our principals meeting in small groups with grade-level teachers to look at this data, maybe to look at their current students, and then also to reflect last year on their instruction and their students there and how they scored. We're planning to offer as part of our October 11th Choice PD half-day some professional development for teachers around this data and some of the data reports also, so teachers can select during that day to meet in small groups with some of our administrators and to look through some of the data trends in the district. And the last next step is the individual student reports, the ISR reports, that will be mailed home to parents that will outline specifics on their child's performance and they're set to go home early next week. And if we come to the next slide, we can give you a little bit of a sneak peek at what they look like. So here you'll see the student's performance level as well as their scores in individual sections. This is actually just the first page. There's several pages after that that outline specific strands within ELA and math and how the child did on the assessment. The boxed text there in red, I don't know if you can highlight it, but I guess you guys can see it from where you are, gives you, and this is new this year, the state is putting out a New Jersey parent portal. And if you go to that link or type that into your web address, you can access the portal that will allow you to put in that code. So parents can go to that website and type in that long letter numbered code and they can actually see specific information on, you know, strategies that might be helpful for their students, resources that might support their growth. So that's new this year as well. And again, those are going to be mailed hard copy, probably in the beginning of next week. They're going out Monday, so give a few days for them to get to you.
Okay. That's the end of the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment data. Are there any questions we can field about the data we just shared from the board?
One question, Ms. Vennecy.
Yes.
Is this report, is this going off September 30th, what you're showing us now?
Yes.
Yes.
And that's going to analyze my seventh grade grandchild, but he's only been there for three weeks. So what is that going to do?
It's the sixth grade, the spring dataset. The spring datasets are going to come, math and ELA, the spring testing cycle.
From, so from sixth grade?
Yes, from sixth.
From the 1819 school year, yeah, the previous year.
Got it.
Any other board members have any questions for Ms. Vennecy? Any questions from the audience?
Well, I know, so the code that you get, is that going to give you a chart of your specific child and what he needs to do to make himself better?
If from what we hear, there's going to be information for parents, not only to break down the score, but also help that they can provide. We've never been there yet because we haven't gone through it yet, so.
Yeah, they're saying information to address the specific needs of your child, so, yeah.
Any questions from the audience?
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. So when you look at Lincoln School practice, you know, Radcliffe has the autistic program, Lincoln School has a combination of special ed. How does that impact and how does that reflect in your scores?
So students' special needs, the ability for them to test is governed by their IEP. The district's procedure, I want to say, is for every student to stress that they should be tested. But if they're not tested, their scores are not a part of this.
There's an alternative assessment.
I'm sorry, there's an alternative assessment that can be written to an IEP to allow students other pathways to graduation.
I understand that, but there are certain kids that do have IEPs that also do take the test.
Right, so they get modifications or combinations of tests. Their scores here reported as?
So their scores are reported within those?
Yes.
Yeah, they're not recorded out individually, they're part of the school reports.
And honestly, students that are out of district placement, their scores are also reported with their home school.
I can just add one more thing. There's an interpretation guide that goes along with the parent reports, and that can be found on that same website that Ken showed you at the beginning of the presentation if you want to see more detail.
Any questions, teachers? Okay, we're going to, we're going to shift, we're going to shift to AP data. We have a little more for you.
All right. All right. Still don't, Ken, sorry.
So, I'm sorry. As you, we received our AP data back several days ago, and it's very important to look at this with moderate. Many schools are highlighted by their AP scores. And we have dedicated a lot of resources in looking at this over the years. One strategy we implemented last year is program study was requiring every student that goes in to an AP class to sit for the exam. And we're happy to say that this impacted our data. We went from, you know, we went up to about 220 students seeking AP courses. So our enrollment in AP courses, it's about 150 here, 160. It jumped in last year. And that also impacted how many tests were being taken, because a lot of times, a student in AP course will be in multiple AP courses and sit for multiple tests. When we look at that number, that's very, that's great to have that many kids in our most rigorous program, the AP program. Then we look at students that scored a passing score. Passing, AP is set up in a similar fashion. It's one, two, three, four, five. Passing, what most schools will accept for passing credit is a three or higher, right? So when we look at this data, how many three or hires, what score did we get? Over time, this number was going down a little bit. This number jumped up as well, which we're very happy about. When you take this number over that number, we kind of stay the same. We just engage a lot more kids in the AP curriculum, which is wonderful. But this is the most interesting dataset, I think. When you take a look at how much percentage we increased with AP, we increased 33% of passing scores in AP, which is a great dataset to look at. And the work continues here, continues with what's working, what's not working. How do we move students into a program so they just don't get put in an AP class and it's very rigorous? How do we, how do we guide them into this over time? How does our whole program work? And how do we get more students to pass? So it's the beginning of a great shift in some of our AP data that we've been looking for. How it breaks down per course, and you see two datasets here, and I can read through the courses here at the bottom. Like what you have in tan, you have the number of students that sat for a test, and you have the number of students that scored a three or better, passing on the AP exams. This is biology, that's about 15 right there, 30. Calculus, AB, calculus, BC, the two levels of calculus. Chemistry, right? We actually had a student sit for the Chinese, even though we don't offer the course, they can still sit for them. We had a student pass that. This is a great win here, computer science principles. Our new program of computer science, we had about 10 kids take the test and about eight of them passed it, which is wonderful. This has always been a strong point of our curriculum, English Language and Composition, as well as English Literature and Composition. Here we have Environmental Science, these numbers are up a lot for us, believe it or not. Human Geography, Italian Language and Culture. Macroeconomics has always been a strong AP. And then just to finish it off, we have Physics I, maybe Physics II. We have Spanish Language and Culture. That's pretty impressive. We have Statistics. And then all of our studios, Studio R, 2D, 3D and Drawing. I think most of these kids got fives, believe it or not, looking at the data. U.S. Government, Politics. And then we have a large amount of students, probably largest, taking United States History. This is how we fare in these respective programs. Okay, are there any questions about this data I can help answer? Any questions from the board? Thank you very much. Any audience, nothing? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vennecy.
Hi, everybody. I'm Karen Greco, Director of Communications and Journalist and Teacher here at the high school. And tonight, we just wanted to take a couple of minutes and discuss some criteria and methodology for school rankings that typically come out over the summer months. We hope to address tonight that each ranking is very different in the way they collect data and the different data points that they use for their criteria. They're published at various times throughout the year and on different schedules. There's also a tremendous amount of movement from year to year on these lists based on changing criteria. So you'll see that school positions change pretty frequently each year. Throughout the community, there seems to be conversation about the rankings, how they're calculated and the ever-changing criteria. And tonight, we'll highlight just three that you may be aware of. There are certainly more out there. You may know of some others. You may read and look forward to some others. But tonight, we'll just focus on New Jersey Monthly, U.S. News and World Report, and then Niche Rankings. New Jersey Monthly is the print and digital publication. It runs both online and in print, the September issue, every other year on even-numbered years. This is probably the most recognizable ranking within the state. And the one that we're looking at tonight is the 2018 ranking. That's based on data from the 1617 school year, so it's one year behind. The next ranking will come out about 13 months from now, so like late August of 2020. And some of the data that you just heard presented by Ms. Vennecy and Mrs. Locan Sola will likely be included in that September 2020 ranking. They ranked about 305 public high schools in the state. And I said that the criteria will likely be based on what we, what we just heard, because as I mentioned, it's kind of ever-changing and it tweaks year after year and it can be altered. The 2018 ranking calculated Nutley to be number 146. That was up 20 spots from the 2016 ranking where we were 166. And it was based on the data that I have here on this chart. You can see some of the data that we just talked about. Ms. Vennecy discussed an increase in students taking AP classes. Where's the country?
I'm sorry.
Students scoring three or better on the AP test, Ms. Vennecy just mentioned that that was up 33%. Also in red, number of 11th and 12th graders taking AP courses. In the left column, you can see the three areas in which New Jersey Monthly rates, school student environment for students at school, student faculty ratio, number of AP courses offered, again, 11th and 12th graders taking AP courses, number of students 9th to 12th taking a performance or grade level arts course. Student performance has a higher rating in New Jersey Monthly. That includes students scoring 15, 50 or better on the SATs. And again, students percentage scoring three or higher on an AP test. Student outcomes is also taken into account, and that's the sum of the four-year graduation rate, which Nutley High School typically does very well in, and the percentage of students enrolled in a two- or four-year college within 16 months of graduation. So even if a student is not immediately enrolled for that September, you have 16 months in which to do that. The next one that we wanted to highlight was U.S. News and World Report. That comes out typically in the summer. It's an online publication and they have a higher emphasis on college readiness. You can see here, circled in red, they only look at the 12th graders who are taking the AP exams. Here in Nutley, we encourage 11th graders to take both AP courses and AP exams. We even have some 10th graders who take courses as well. These things are not calculated into this rating. This rating also puts about 40% into math and reading proficiency, that's 20%, and another 20 to math and reading performance on state assessments. I do want to mention that when I was looking at the criteria, which you can see on the left, college readiness, college curriculum courses, underserved student performance and the graduation rate, I do want to mention that within the top 20, you will see that the number of charter schools, it takes about 10 places for a regular public school to even break into the top 10. The first public school to do so was Princeton, they were number 10 on the list. So when you're looking at comparison, you're not always comparing apples to apples. Some of these schools are very different, different funding, different kind of structures. So just something to keep in mind as you're looking at that. This is a quote I actually got from one of the editors at U.S. News and World Report. It's on their website, and I also spoke to someone there today. They really wanted to call attention to the way they revamped their methodology year over year. So there was a tremendous shift in schools between 2018 and 2019. They're saying here that the rise or fall in the 2019 ranking doesn't necessarily reflect the difference in the data. That shift could have been caused by the way, simply the way they looked at schools and the criteria they use. They ranked about 14,500 high schools nationwide this year. That's up 5,000 schools from the year before. Nutley was not even included in the 2018 ranking, I confirmed that today. And in the 2019 ranking, we were 192, I'm sorry, 191 out of 428 public high schools. This last one I want to highlight is called Niche. I'm not sure how many people are familiar with it, but it's an ever-growing online site which strictly publishes rankings. That's their bread and butter. They publish rankings like best places to live, best K-12 school districts, best colleges, best places to work. They're a company located in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. They've been around less than 20 years. They were founded in 2002. Really important to note, if you're looking at online surveys, again, I mentioned, every survey does it differently. In every single factor, which is listed along the left side, academics, cultural diversity, student parent surveys, unexperienced, teacher grades, club and activities, health and safety, resources of faculty and sports, every single one of them mentions a survey. A survey of students, a survey of parents. You can go onto Niche, you can participate in a survey for a town. This is based very strongly, very strongly on public opinion. So I just caution you when you're reading through them that while they do, you know, put an emphasis 60% on academics, there's also a survey piece to that. So just important to know when you're looking at things that you're not always comparing apples to apples. It could very, very frequently be kind of an apples and oranges comparison and things are not on the same playing field. So again, we imagine that when New Jersey Monthly comes out, we'll be looking forward to this data to be included next summer. So about August of 2020, we can expect to see their September issue published. And we'll certainly circle back here then and present those findings. I know this was just kind of a topic that we've heard a lot about, people kind of acquiring where we stand, how they're calculated, so we did want to provide a little background tonight. Any questions from the board or from the public that I can answer?
What do you say we stand now on the New Jersey Monthly?
So the New Jersey Monthly, we're looking at the 2018 list, which came out last summer. We were number 146. Two years prior, on the 2016 list, we were 166, so we were off 20 spots.
Can you tell where we're ranked in our county?
I can tell you for?
Because that would be more apples to apples, I would be curious.
And for which survey?
Just for like New Jersey Monthly?
I don't, I can look into it. I don't know that I'll tell by hand.
I was curious, I was seeing that.
I don't know, they don't rank by county, but I can look into it certainly and see what I can find.
We're ranked, you know.
I'm sorry?
Well, do they all school in Essex County?
I can look into that, yeah. I just, I don't have that handy, sure.
I have to re-presentation.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Sure.
Any other questions? No.
Thank you, everybody.
So thank you all. I think it's really important when we're having these conversations to make sure that we're always looking at the evidence, right? To look at the data that we have. We have so much data. People complained bitterly about the PARC test. They complained about making every student participate from grade three all the way through high school. But now that we have five years of data, we can really get an accurate look at how the programs, how the curriculum, how the assessments that's been put into place over these past years has had an how the assessments that's been put into place over these past years has had an impact on student learning. And obviously, that trajectory is very positive. Thank you, guys, for all of that research. I know it's a lot, and it's just the beginning. We have a lot more work to do to be able to analyze that data and to be able to use that data with our students in the classroom. So thank you so much.
Thank you again from the board. Great work. Love to see you guys progressing. I thought the introduction of how things are ranked here in town and how we match up is an important piece. And I know that's a challenge for us sometimes to kind of answer those questions. So there's a lot of good information there for the board as well as the district. Thank you. We're going to turn it back over to the board. We're not doing the introductions to that as well. We didn't, uh, curb before.
Thanks. So what do you want to know? So today, Mark's beginning of Start With Hello Week. That is promoting connectedness, kindnessness, and inclusion among students and throughout our community. The program teaches us how to make a difference and raises awareness to help us identify people in our schools, people in our community who are maybe showing signs of social isolation, maybe not fitting in, not connecting. So all of the activities this week are intended to be fun, easy, impactful ways to create an environment that values each individual. Start With Hello gives us some skills, maybe some extra skills necessary to reach out to somebody that you might see and need. This week, activities are happening at that elementary and the high school level. Activities at the middle school kick off on Monday, October 7th, with a speaker from Sandy Hook Promise. Sandy Hook Promise is a national not-for-profit led by several of the family members who lost children in the Sandy Hook Elementary shooting in December of 2012. They created this program as a way to begin to identify some signs of that disconnectedness. Today was a lot of fun throughout the district. We had students at every school wearing their green and yellow. We had lots of conversations. I was really pleased when I went into the schools, even actually, in all honesty, when I was at Coffee with Cap, that people did Start With Hello, and I loved that. In other news, the four classrooms in the double-deck trailer at Washington began housing students on Monday, September 16th. The third trailer was delivered and sited last Thursday and Friday, and those classrooms are expected to be complete prior to Columbus Day weekend. There is no change to the plan for Spring Garden School for their trailer yet. The delivery of that trailer is scheduled still for November 1st and ready for students after Thanksgiving. I do want to take a minute and acknowledge Michael Pariji, our Director of Buildings and Grounds, and his whole team, maintenance, custodians, facilities, grounds, everybody, who stayed the entire weekend. And I do mean that. I was with them Saturday night. We were talking Sunday night at 7:00. We were still all here in Nutley. Making sure that, not just that the space was cleaned up, but the classrooms were clean and ready for the teachers and students on Monday. So thank you for that. I also need to give a thank you to Carl Tenau and Dave Berry from the township. They have been wonderful partners to us. They've come out, I don't know, it seems like 500 or 600 times to be able to make sure that we have the requisite certificates of occupancy, to make sure that we were doing things to meet all of the safety and security expectations. They were also with us Sunday night, still at 7:00. So a big thank you to them also. Another thing that's important to note now that school's back in session, I say this with the teachers in the room, I say this with parents in the room, I say this with staff in the room. Please, please, please remember the importance of hand washing. I cannot, I cannot say enough how important hand washing is. We already have several confirmed instances of kaksaki. You probably know it as hook and mouth disease. It is really contagious, but the best prevention is hand washing. We're doing our part again. The custodians are constantly disinfecting. They're constantly making sure that our spaces are washed down, but it is passed by touch. So, I'll say it again. Wash your hands. Wash your hands. There are lots and lots of events coming up in the coming weeks. Wednesday, we have the Rotary-sponsored New Teacher Dinner. Friday night is the Walker-Thon honoring Mr. Walker, the namesake here of the middle school. And then next week is the Thriving Survivors Walk. The Columbus Day Parade Dinner honoring, among others, our own Karen Yaman's happens the following week. We have fall festivals at the schools. We have sixth-grade camping trips from Lincoln and Spring Garden, and then the Camp Burning trip after that. And then, of course, the Columbus Day Parade itself. That doesn't even count our single session for professional learning and all of the other professional development that's happening in the district. It is truly a wonderful time of year, and we have gotten lucky with glorious weather. I'll look forward to seeing all of you in the schools and around town. I'm just going to say, please remember to say hello, and I will promise to be the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Blazer. We're going to turn it over to our Board Secretary, Mrs. Karen Yaman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. By way of introduction, by now, students have been experiencing the new food service vendor offerings. Pomtonian Food Service is fully up and running. They are, have been running some recent promotions. Last week, there was a sushi day at the high school. Here at the middle school, the kids were so excited. They had chicken and waffles for lunch. They've got a ramen noodle promotion coming and sweet tacos. So we're very excited to have them and to see what's happening in the cafeterias. They're also going to be updating food service interactive link on our website, which will be focusing a lot on dietary needs and nutritional information for our parents. And there'll be teacher lunches available very soon. And also, we are trying to promote the use of MySchool Bucks to our parents so that they can upload money onto their child's accounts to be used on a daily basis. Did you want to add something?
No, you got the teachers. I just wanted to make sure there's buzz, buzz that they're up and running except for teacher lunches. But they are going to reinstate that. They heard you. They know that you want your salads back. They want you to know that you want to order the same day. And they actually came to the principal's meeting the other day to talk about what their process is for getting that done. And I think that Karen captured it's going to be, when we say soon, like quickly. They know you're hungry.
We are well underway with the onsite audit. This is week two. They have been taking over our conference room. So thank you so much to everyone in central office, especially Dr. Blazer for giving up her second office. And they've been working very closely with everyone in business office, central office, special services, to get all of the data that they need to complete the audit. We're also in the midst of our update of our fixed assets. So a claim inventory is going around from school to school. We not only do our fixed assets, we also do all of our technology each and every year. So we have an accurate count of what we have and where it is all located. And as far as the facilities, I'll turn it over to Mr. Pariji, and he will report on what's happening.
Thank you. Okay, just an update on the trailers, just to add to the situation over there. I'd like to also like to thank Mayor Scarpella and Mike Luzzi, Esteno River Street Sweeper, and Baca Motor to help us remove the construction dirt, which is a major assistance. Actually, they are coming back tomorrow to continue. We're going to be removing about 50 yards of construction dirt. Without their help, it would have cost us a lot of money to get rid of this dirt, and I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay. All lots over at the high school stall bed. The stalls have been repaired and are working as of the beginning of school. Do have custodians checking frequently to ensure that the kids are secure when they come in. We are also in the auditorium, in the, sorry, Park Hall. We are constructing three ticket booths. This will help with security. We're going to put the ticket booths back into the locations where they were in the past. So when the people come into the stadium, they'll have their tickets, and we'll be selling tickets at the gate when you walk in. You'll have a ticket. You'll be able to check baggage, luggage, whatever they bring in at that time. So that should increase the security of the park hall. Trailer at Spring Garden, again, we have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday at 4:00 to update with the contractors and all the people involved. We held interviews for the maintenance position and the head custodian at the high school. That's continuing. And we have interviews scheduled for this Wednesday for the remaining custodial jobs throughout the district. We have three positions currently open. We'll be doing that Wednesday. Any questions?
I just have a quick question for you, Mr. Pariji. I know the door locks in the bathroom on the stalls, depending on ongoing issue.
Yes.
Are they, they're damaged, or is there anything inside the bathroom that kind of instructs students on who to notify if something like that should be damaged? Or how do, you know, aside from janitors walking in there or maintenance people walking in there and finding the damage, is there any protocol that maybe the students would be aware of, maybe in the bathroom somewhere where they know that something is damaged, to report it somewhere?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Just, I love it helps the situation. I don't know how frequently it's happening, but...
Some of the older bathrooms, quite often, all they have to do is slam on the doors. They're rusty.
A couple.
And they lose their alignment very easily. Somebody needs to re-replace.
Okay. Yeah, just figured there's a way to make that process more easier for you guys, and you're not always aware.
Yeah, maybe students can, so we can sit down, talk, still get, maybe come up with ideas every morning with them. Good idea?
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
I do know the board got to take a tour of the auditorium space. I know it wasn't totally cleaned yet, but is there any, anything to share? It looked beautiful.
Yes, we are one inspection away. We have a fire inspection on Wednesday for our final inspection, and then all inspections will be completed. We just have to do some fire alarm testing. From back on Wednesday.
Thanks for your work there, too. I know it was a lot of work with all of the seats needing cleaning and the floors needing to be done after the debris.
Mr. Blazer, I just wanted to continue what the superintendent said about Mr. Pariji's team in the town. Being there, working on the trailers at Washington School was, I don't like to see the trailers, but it was nice to see the progress that was being made, and the women worked together with the town to share the services to get something done. Compliment all of us. Thank you.
Anyone else want to add something? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pariji. All right, so we're going to move to our committee reports. We're going to start off with Mr. Podolski with admin.
Sure, Mr. President. The admin committee met on September 17th. Mr. Riley and myself and Dr. Blazer. Dr. Blazer provided an update on the completion of the double-deck trailers at Washington and the delivery of the new trailer. Students were in the classrooms Monday, September 16th. There are several punch lists, items such as gutters, lattice work, still to be completed. The new trailer was delivered Thursday, September 19th, and sited last Friday, September 20th. Completion is scheduled for October 10th, the Thursday prior to Columbus Day weekend. Dr. Blazer reviewed the interview process for the position of Business Administrator and Assistant Business Administrator. The board will be meeting three candidates in closed session tonight. Dr. Blazer shared that additional information material were requested for the district's application for emergency aid. No timeline was given for review of any awards or funds. The committee discussed previous demographic studies, construction proposal, and building needs in preparation for the long-range facilities meeting on October 1st, 2019. Dr. Blazer reviewed staffing, personnel, and student items. Dr. Blazer provided an update on legal matters. Our next scheduled administration meeting is Thursday, October 10th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Podolski. We're going to move over to academic. Ms. Arrow?
Hello. The academic committee met September 16th in attendance with Ms. Martin, myself, and Mr. Locan Sola and Ms. Currie. Ms. Locan Sola shared the district's student learning assessment presentation that was discussed tonight and discussed the different trends in the data. She also shared how curriculum and programming changes have impacted the district. She also gave an update on plans for Professional Development Day on October 11th. The afternoon will include a menu of professional learning options for teachers to choose from, including Schoology, the Danielson Framework, and instructional best practices. She also shared information on, excuse me, the New Jersey Department of Human Services School Climate and Safety Survey. That will be administered anonymously to the middle school. And the committee reviewed field check of professional data development. We will meet again Thursday, October 10th.
Thank you, Ms. Arrow. We're going to turn it over to finance, Mr. DeMaio.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first two bullet points I have here were covered by Mr. Pariji for facilities. But then we have, we met on September 17th. The CMAs and Mr. Mora reviewed the September 23rd, 2019, finance resolutions including transfers. Dr. Blazer reviewed several facility requests and the potential security issues that need to be addressed with each group. Mr. Mora, report on the status of the onsite audit and the various reports that we generated for the review. Dr. Blazer reviewed personnel recommendations. Mr. Ferraro initiated discussion with regarding planting of trees along the ball field Washington school on the Walnut, Walnut street side and parking the maintenance shed property. Next meeting day is October 14th.
Thank you, Mr. DeMaio. We're going to turn it back over to Ms. Arrow for policy.
The policy committee met September 16th. We discussed and reviewed the class size policy previously approved in June. Ms. Locan Sola shared no information on Policy 5561, which is the use of physical restraint and seclusion techniques. This is pending discussion with the district principals, and the first reading was tabled. In addition, we reviewed a number of policies and updated where necessary. These are included for first reading on the agenda tonight. Attendance areas, student enrollments, school year, school day, managing electronic mail, student records, Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, emergency and crisis situations, reporting accidents, and care of injured and no persons. The next meeting will be Thursday, October 10th.
Thank you, Ms. Arrow. We now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we will allow questions or comments on only the resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. Our Ward Regulation 601 allot 20 minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once, only after others wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded if your statement is to lengthy abuse of obscene or relevant or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to state your name and address each and every time you address the board and sign with a conclusion before you take the microphone. Will the first person wishing to be heard on the resolutions for tonight's agenda please step forward? Seeing none. Mr. ... no, we're going to go with Ms. Arrow for academic.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our academic resolution 1 through 2 as stated.
Certainly. Discussion. Roll call, Mr. Cruz.
Mr. DeMaio?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Podolski?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Schlerer?
Yes.
Ms. Arrow?
Yes.
Mr. Carnesella?
Yes.
Mr. Podolski, would you take administration, please?
Yes, Mr. Blazer. I move Administration Resolution Number 1.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, Mr. Cruz.
Mr. DeMaio?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Podolski?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Schlerer?
Yes.
Ms. Arrow?
Yes.
Mr. Carnesella?
Yes.
Ms. Clark, would you take finance resolutions, please?
Yes, I move Finance Resolutions 1 through 12 as written.
13.
13. 1 through 13, I'm sorry.
Certainly. Discussion. Roll call, Mr. Cruz.
Mr. DeMaio?
Vote yes, except I abstain on number 5.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Podolski?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Schlerer?
Yes.
Ms. Arrow?
Yes.
Mr. Carnesella?
Yes. Ms. Clark, would you just recognize the acceptance of donation on number Resolution 13, please?
I don't have that. I know, but I don't know the one at the 12. Be it resolved that the Board of Education accept the following donations. The amount of donation from Washington School PTO for supplemental teaching supplies for the amount of $3,907.93.
Thank you, and thank the Washington PTO. Okay, Mr. Schlerer, would you take personnel, please?
Yes, I'd like to move on. Personnel Resolution Number 1 is ready.
Certainly. Discussion. Roll call, Mr. Cruz.
Mr. DeMaio?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Podolski?
Sorry, yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Schlerer?
Yes.
Ms. Arrow?
Yes.
Mr. Carnesella?
Yes.
Ms. Arrow, would you take policy, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Excuse me, I'd like to move Policy Resolution 1 as stated.
Certainly. Discussion. Roll call, Mr. Cruz.
Mr. DeMaio?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Podolski.
Yes.
Mrs. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Riley.
Yes.
Mr. Schaller.
Yes.
Ms. Arrow.
Yes.
Mr. Carnesella.
Yes.
In this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our regulation allot 30 minutes for these communications. Again, each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. As stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board and sign with Mr. Capuzza before you take the microphone. Will the first person wishing to be heard on any or all school business, please step forward?
John Memora, 259 Franklin Ave, Hasbrook Heights. Some kind of old school. I came up with something that I wanted to just address the board with, since this is going to be my last official board meeting. For those of you also that are in attendance that don't know me, I'm John Memora. I'm the assistant business administrator and assistant board secretary for the district, and I started in January of 2019. I just would like to express my gratitude to the board and acknowledge a couple of people that have been very important to me and my time in Nutley. So first, I'd just like to thank all the faculty and the staff that come to work each day with the common goal of providing the highest level of quality education and care for our students. So I'm sorry my back's towards you guys who I'm talking to from Yanacost School. I know it's been said many times before, but you guys are truly the lifeblood of the district. I also like to thank Mr. Nicolet and Mr. Preeji, as well as the entire custodial, maintenance, and ground staff for doing all the little things when no one's watching. And also for stretching the limited resources they have available and still being able to provide a safe, clean, and inviting environment for the students and the staff. Thanks to the administration team that we have here and Cabinet also for always making me feel like part of the team and for your encouragement and always focusing on moving the district forward. I'd also like to thank the central office staff and business office staff, so bear with me while I recite all their names. Julie Alessio, Lindsey Council.
Whoa!
I'm glad you're here. Kathy Svera, Peggy Hollywood, Joanne Torres, Lorraine Butler, Nancy Cunningham, Donna Brady, of course, Madeline Capuzza. Also past friends Maggie Mara, Josephine Maleseva, Linda Layden, and Gabby Miller. I'd also like to thank Natty Ferraro and Jean Boyle. Thank you all for being a part of the best staff a guy could ask for. I'd also like to thank you, the board, past, present members. It's a shame that most people will never fully realize the amount of time, work, and dedication it takes. Just know that over the last three years, I've seen this firsthand and developed a newfound admiration for this commitment and all the work that you do. I'd also like to thank... Keep going. Dr. Glazer and Karen Yamas, two of the most inspirational and strong women I know. Thank you for involving me in everything and always valuing my input. There are many lessons I've learned from you, and I'll be taking them with me as I embark on my next adventure. Finally, to my wife, Megan, my girls, Mia and Giada, my whole family and friends, thank you for your support. I didn't think I was going to get this emotional. Excuse me, I'm sorry. I hate being that guy. Also, thank you to Rosemary Bruceback for running a great before and after camp program. So with all that said, I get nervous when I write these lists. I never want to forget anybody, so if that was the case, please know I'm thinking about you and I thank you. Ian, there you go. Thank you, Ian, and thank you for always saving the day and keeping us up and running at a minute's notice. I know everything's always an emergency, and you're always there to support us. So with that said, thank you very much.
So, Mr. Memora, I did not realize that today was your final meeting. So you caught me by surprise, as probably is every other board member here, because this is the first time you've ever had an assistant. You actually get up to speak and address the board. So it was, I will tell you that for the time that you've been here, you've been nothing less than a professional. You really took a role here, dove in. I know that the leadership of Dr. Glazer and Mrs. Yamas was there to help guide you, but I will tell you that you were certainly a quick study. You seem to fill the gaps pretty quickly, and the district is better for it, and I know that the opportunities are endless for you. I definitely feel, truly believe that we've lost a true asset in you, but I hope that whatever steps you take between now and the rest of your future is everything that you've ever hoped for. And I appreciate the time that you spent here with the district.
Thank you.
And I wasn't going to do this, because you and I share that emotional bent, and I'm going to say you are going to be a tremendous loss. You have, in my time here, you've been here longer than I have. You have been just such a value add to everything that you do, from working with Cabinet on all the title grants to working with Tom Tonian to make sure that everything did get up and running. With the changeover from Chartwells, who you also worked with before that. I think that all of those people that you acknowledged in your office would say, we let Madeline have the microphone too, would say that, of course, we wish you every great thing in your next endeavor, every success. You don't need good luck, you're ready to go. We'll miss you desperately.
I would like to open it up to Mrs. Yamas, the rest of the board, for any comments for John.
I'd just like to say, Johnson said, you know, how you've been here, you've been great, you've been very involved in the district. I think you did a great job, and everybody's going to miss you. And, you know, you were Karen's right arm and the left arm to Dr. Glazer coming in.
And I have no right or left arm.
Now, does your right or left, but we'll see where that goes, but that, John, best of luck.
Thank you.
I'd like to, let me just, John, I've known you a short period of time, but in the time that I've known you, it's been a pleasure. And our loss is someone else's gain, so good luck to you going forward.
Thank you.
Mr. President, same way, we can go on all night, but thank you for what you've done for us, Sean, what you've brought to the district, and I admire you moving on to try a new venture.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yep.
John, everybody said, you know, I mean, thank you for all your service, and you for all your service to this district. I wish you only the best, and just keep in touch with us.
Well done. Well done, gentlemen, thank you.
I have to say the same. The first time that I've known you, you've not only been an asset, but so helpful, especially to somebody new coming on like me, and I really appreciate it. And like Frank said, our loss is there being 100%.
I can't look at him. Probably, I'll start to cry. You have to look this way. Of course, I can't look at Eric even. When you came here three and a half years ago, we knew when we made the recommendation to hire you that it was a good decision. Little did we know that it turned into a great decision. It's been my pleasure, and I am so proud to have been a part of your future and your career. You are so ready for this, and they are so lucky to have you. I will miss you, I will just having you there every day to bounce ideas off of and to talk about things and to know that we were doing the right thing. But I will always be there, and I'm also very thankful for our friendship.
Thank you.
Anybody else I do address before? John, do not get it. Okay, seeing none. Any old business to come before the board? Any new business?
I have some old business.
Okay.
At the last meeting, I had asked a question in reference to the referendum plans, and I had learned that we had more than one proposal that we had looked at. So I had asked the board secretary to get me a set of plans that I could look at, which I did. I came here with Mr. Schaller, with Ms. Yamas, and Ian, and we looked at those, spent a lot of time looking at the different options that we had at the time. Subsequent to that, I met with the architect a few days later and went over some value assessments with them. And I just, if you could briefly help me understand why we only went out with one option when we could have gone out with two options? Because the way I looked at it, maybe I'm wrong, you guys could correct me, and girls. But the way I looked at it is we could have put additions on all the elementary schools to eliminate the trailers. Is that correct?
There was rendition of our book, expanding all of the elementary schools.
Okay, and then we could have not done that and just put in addition at the middle school?
We could have put an addition on the middle school, but it would not have solved the space issues that were facing.
Right, but the elementary schools would have done that, is that what you're saying?
The elementary schools would have been expanded, would have had been expanded significantly at each of those schools and be able to create the space.
And they were, according to what I looked at.
That could be the case, though those were many additions that we looked at. So again, I don't know, I can't speak to the conversation that you had privately with the architect?
Well, no, I'm not even talking about that. I'm just talking about, I think everybody that's here saw the plans that were drawn up by the architect.
It has nothing to do with my discussion. And in the start of this, we also had a philosophy of bringing the middle school model into play.
Right.
For the benefit of the students. So when we were looking at how we were going to design a way to solve the space issues, we wanted to make sure that it was inclusive, in a position to be able to increase the rigor and be able to create an environment that helped the sixth grade with a gap that we were seeing that was in relation to them coming to the middle school. We had that experience, and that teaming experience, which is what Mr. DeMaio is speaking to earlier.
So I'm not even sure, because we've talked about this a few different times, as far as the sixth grade staff being trained on the middle school model and taking the praxis and being certified. Is that correct?
So, and I can let Dr. Glazer speak to this, but that's not the full explanation. We have some that were certified, correct, for departmentalization.
You have some that are highly qualified to teach in the middle school, and we had set up a procedure two years ago that all of the teachers that were going to teach sixth grade needed to take the praxis so that they were qualified to departmentalize. That's a requirement if you're going to departmentalize in an elementary school. So at this point, now that we've gotten there, all five of our schools have either highly qualified or teachers that have passed the practice and the praxis, and they're content area. And that's where we're at currently. If we are able to move the sixth grade to the middle school, the people that just have the praxis would have to go forward with either the transcript review, right, to be content specific, highly qualified. And if there's somebody that wants to move up, because we always have that, they also still have to take the praxis.
I just, in reviewing those plans, I... Especially where we are now with all these trailers, and as I've said a million times, I'm not a fan of trailers, I don't like trailers, I never wanted trailers. And I still don't want trailers. And I still would like to get my arms around the space that's at Spring Garden that we talked about two weeks ago, where we took the boilers out. Because I think we can still look at that as a classroom, that space, rather than have a trailer there. We still have boilers in Lincoln School, we still have boilers in Washington School, where we could have classroom space. So I think that all those items should be looked at, and, I mean, if we can do a referendum for half of what we asked for twice and it went down, and add classrooms and eliminate the trailers, I don't see why we wouldn't do that. Especially knowing that we have hanging over our head two major projects coming down the pipe potentially between the residential project that they're talking about at Hop on the Roach and a potential pool club situation that's lingering out there.
Well, as you know, you were part of the long-range facility plan, and we're scheduled to meet on October 1st.
Correct.
As we discussed here. I think part of that conversation leads to be why we ultimately went out with the design that we did. Was a combination of a lot of different thoughts and processes, which was going to allow sixth grade to move over with the elimination of trailers and provide the adequate space that we need. Those rooms that you have discussed, those are certain areas that we looked at. Some of those still maintain asbestos contained inside of those units, which create a larger cleanup. Some of that is cost prohibitive, some of that you can't build on if you needed to do a second classroom above.
Well, can you be specific when you say?
No, I can't, because I'm not the architect, but that's something that we can absolutely have a conversation with as a group with the architect, because they are the professionals. We lean on them for that professional thing, and I will be completely speaking out of line to be able to tell you exactly the reason why. Would the information that was provided to us years ago, when we decided to move in this direction, I can tell you that I would not be able to validate at this point in time why that would be, because we did use those professionals to help us in that guiding that process.
So is it possible that those professionals could be at our long-range meeting?
They are planning to be there for a discussion, so we can bring some of those questions on.
Did we ask them, I spoke to you the other day in the CMAs, about regular drawings? Will they be able to provide us with drawings that we could review? Because we're very tough with the overhead, the ceiling, right, Fred? It's very difficult to see, and I, you know, even with designers, I have difficulty seeing what I needed to see. So with drawings, if we could get them, I know we would have to pay for them, but I mean...
We have them, and there are 44 different iterations of plans over time. So the question is, like what you guys looked at, I understand from our administrative committee meeting, was the plan to build the five elementary schools. So those plans are from 2013. The first referendum that went out, not those, not that iteration, if you will, was from 2016, and what you looked at in my office was from 2017, 18. So I think the question is, what is it that we want to see? Or if you want to see all 44, 44, I think it's 44 sets, because there's a room, believe it or not, that houses all of those sets.
Here?
Yes.
Because I had asked for that in...
Oh, Karen's saying she couldn't find what you were looking for.
Right.
But the architects have to have a copy. I mean, they were paying for it.
Sure, it's the architect.
Yeah, they can read his copy.
I think the architect could bring his copy.
That's what I'm saying, they were paying for it.
I mean, I looked at them all day, so I had no issue looking at 44 different plans.
Make sure you bring your glasses.
Bring your glasses.
I would like to just pull my...
No, and they, I have to say, because remember, I came after most of those discussions as well. They are, as Danny said, expert in being able to talk about the solutions, and which are short-term, which are long-term, which were feasible, and some of which, you know, one of the issues that we face is that we're using a lot of instructional space that was never intended as instructional space. You know, windows or other issues, and some of the, as I remember the conversations, and I certainly, again, because it wasn't considered since I've been here, wouldn't want to quote it, but that was some of the issues as well.
I look forward to meeting.
I just had a question off of what you said. As far as the teacher being certified to a middle school, are there enough teachers being certified to go to the middle school model from elementary school?
So we're not, right now, what we've done is to make sure all of our sixth grade sections have that. If we were to move to a middle school model, the construction plans that we've had so far are about a two-year construction, which is why we gave that two-year timeline before, so we would have that same amount of time. The staff that took advantage of going back to school or becoming highly qualified were able to accomplish that in that time frame.
No.
Okay, okay.
I have something else, but...
But is it another, is it another old business?
Old business, no.
Not, okay. All right, so any other old business to come before the board?
Mr. President, maybe it's old business, maybe it's new business. I'm afraid so. I'm not trying to draw, but school ge, right, are students use school ge as well, right, not just the staff?
They will, yes, because they're... They will, yes, because they're going to be taking assessments. We're going to be adding teacher pages. Janine did a lunch and learn just today with staff.
That's one of the questions, is there anything planned for training our students?
Yeah, so this week will be all elementary school doing lunch and learns today. Dr. Shojah and Miss Cendy and Miss Warren and I were at Radcliffe, and we'll be kind of doing a roadshow of all the elementaries during lunch and learning this week, and then we also...
These lunch and learns for our students or for our staff?
For the staff.
I'm asking, no, we shall start with the staff.
I agree with that as well. In the middle school, this education, we develop the assessment for our full benchmark SGOs. I was there personally. We've looked at these assessments over six hundred students, they're okay, and then our teacher analyzing the data now. So things like that are happening in different areas around the district. The students took the assessment, and they were trained on how to take the assessment in Schoology and...
What's the plan, what's a long-term plan for the students? I mean, is this going to be a six-month, you know, window, or are they going to learn it as they go home and take the assessments?
Right, so the plan is for, the departments that develop assessments, the students will take the assessments in Schoology. As far as Mike Yanfis, as I said, as teachers get on board and as they learn about the working of the platform, it will all add to their class.
What sort of turnkey model, two teachers that we met with today were planning to turnkey, so their students now have to take it, they've done us a modeling.
Remember, our full implementation, it's a four-year implementation, so...
But lunch is not mandatory, right? It's going to be voluntary, right?
It's not for the staff.
The staff, it's not, it's a voluntary, right? If the staff member wants to do a lunch and learn, it's up to them. It's not, it's not someone's...
But it's still a four-year implementation. We've given the expectations to all staff of this year. We're trying it this year. We're working on the assessments this year. We're getting up to speed, maybe discovering how our teacher page would look, how we would do those classrooms, with the expectation that next year it is a full implementation, and in the fourth year we're operational. So we have to give people time to use it and try it. Lunch and learns are voluntary, but the outcome, right?
No, I understand. You just, you know...
So there's also the professional learning days. There's a lot of the time for staff.
They're still using it, right? They're still using it now.
The assessment?
Yes.
Yes, but the staff is also learning how to do that in their department meetings and professional learning.
It's not like we used to teach it for the teacher, and we had to small class it, and we started this year all kind of saying, like, we're going to try this out, we're learning together. I'm shocked how good the students learned it at a very, very good pace, and it's an easy system to use, it's very user-friendly. We started using it just a little bit, and now we're kind of fully, fully engaged in it, and they're using it every day. We share our articles on that, create our articles over that. It's, you know, it's a learning-as-we-go kind of thing, but the information does trickle down, and I can say that firsthand from the teacher's perspective, for me, that's my personal experience. And on that, October 11th, PD Day, we're going to be offering a menu of PD, and some of them will be related to Schoology, full-on beginner level, and for people who want to, you know, work specifically on, you know, create assignments or developing testing quizzes. So we're kind of differentiating and trying to offer some their choice drawing ones, but then also some that are built into the professional development within their contractual hours, so they can...
But it's a four-year, so it's a four-years.
We're in the second, second year. We're in the second year of implementation now.
And we were just asked as teachers just to try it out.
A year ago? A year ago?
We did the pilot. Remember, you had teams of people looking at the different vendors for learning management systems?
It was the end of last year.
And the pilot, but that was, we considered that our first year, and people trying it.
That was the tail end of last year, so they didn't have much time to train.
We weren't trying to train last year. We were trying to identify, and we had a pilot group of people who were doing this turnkey work.
So the four-year implementation also takes into account actually betting it on choosing the program?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I think we're out of new business now. We were somewhere between old and new.
All right. Last month, when I was doing some research about that class size policy, I went on a lot of websites, and I saw that, and this is just a request I'm putting out to the Board, I saw that many of the homepages had information about board members and the superintendent, but they also listed not just the names, but the email addresses. Now, I know that becomes an issue when parents or taxpayers, they have questions about what goes on here, and they're always asking and scrambling for names, our names, and what our email addresses are. I'm just wondering if the Board would consider putting next to the board members' names, or able to click it on, and then would have their email address. It's just me just putting out a request.
I thought we had that. I thought we got... We have that.
Yeah, I know, NOKI Board of Education, but say they wanted to contact, like, all the email addresses for everyone, just specifically. Like, say somebody makes some sort of statement, and a taxpayer wanted to know what we thought about it, or something, so that they can contact us, you know.
And they can contact me through the NOKI Board of Education email?
Your email's not on, but it's not...
Okay.
So I, I, so what I would say is this, I do chair policy. I don't have an issue with looking at a policy if there's anything specific to email communication. The only concern that I would have is some way, somehow, we all have to be looped in on the emails that come through. One of the challenges that we're always going to face as a Board of Nine is that if you have a parent who doesn't follow the chain of command and decides to just skip over going to a principal and going to a board member, one, it delays the resolution that the administrator in the building might be able to solve before it gets to the Board. I've seen that happen several times, and I get it. Parents get frustrated. Maybe they just don't want to go to the principal or that building administrator or the superintendent, and just want to pass through all of that. So if we can create a policy that would address how a board member is going to take that information and then bring it back to the chain of command, I would think that it would be an appropriate platform to work with and to build from, because I just think that if we get away from or have individual communication from the public to an individual board member, but it never gets looped back to the superintendent or the building administrator, I just think it delays and causes additional problem and stresses within the community. That's just my opinion. I would not have a problem with, as the Chair of Policy, to bring it up at our next meeting. We can kind of talk about it. Lisa's not here, but we can talk about it, put it out for first reading, give everyone an opportunity to review it, and then from there make a decision as to whether we table it from that point, do some more modifications, or to move it forward as an existing policy.
Thank you.
Any other new business come before the Board? Whereas the Board of Education will discuss the matters exempt from public discussion pursuant to NJS 104-12, the Board of Education will send this time to discuss the matters in person. Whereas the Board of Education will discuss the matters in person.